Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, Willow's Planning Commission Meeting, May 6, 2025, Willow City Hall. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Hello? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner El Campo.
Present.
Commissioner Coram.
Present.
Commissioner Bratt.
Present.
Vice Chair Valencia.
Present.
Chair Bobadilla.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Moving on. Public comment in Consent Calendar Forum. All matters of consent calendar are considered routine and approved by one motion and vote unless commission members or the city planner first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning consent counter items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments about the three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman and commission members and not to staff and or the audience. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willow's, California, 95988, or email it to planning@cityofwillows.org. And I believe we had a public comment letter, right?
That's right, I'm 6A.
Not for that, yeah, 6A.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna have minutes approval. Any public comments? No public comments? Okay. Minutes approval. Can I get a motion to approve the minute?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to refrain from voting because I was not present at this meeting.
Appreciate it.
I move to approve the minutes of April 21st, 2025, as presented.
And can I get a second?
A second, Pat.
Okay, all those in favor of approving minutes, say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? We have one abstained. Okay. Moving on to our public hearing. All matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individually. Once the chair opens the public hearing, members of the public may request to speak when you're called on by the chair. Please state your name clearly for the audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the commission, please give it to the city planner for distribution. So, item A.
At this time, I'd like to read in a public comment. This was received from Jeff Williams via email today, May 6, 2025, at 4:01 PM. It states...
Excuse me, can you get closer to the mic, please?
Sure. It states, "Good afternoon, Mr. Betancourt. My apologies for the last-minute correspondence. Can you or the chair read the below remarks in regards to item 6A on tonight's agenda? Good evening. In regards to item 6A, I was notified by city staff prior to tonight's item due to the fact I live in the sphere of influence on the mentioned property. As for the conversation from conversion from commercial to residential, I have no issue with the change, but regardless what decision is made for the property, I would appreciate the property owner maintaining a reasonable level of maintenance, i.e. mowing lawns and cutting shrubs. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jeff Williams."
All right, so item A, 510 West Wood Street, Land Use Variants.
Can you hear me? Making sure that's on. And then I have a PowerPoint, we'll get that up here in just a minute. But good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. I know there's a couple new members here, just want to introduce myself. I'm Delaney Garlic, functioning as the city planner for City of Willow's. Myself and a few other staff do staff augmentation from Harrison Associates, so I look forward to presenting to you this evening and moving forward. But tonight's item is variance 2501. And then go ahead, next. This is a request for variance to convert the property located at 510 West Wood Street from its current commercial use to a residential use within the entryway zoning district. Next. This is a street view, just giving you an idea of the property in question. And then next, we have sort of a site plan just showing existing property. The proposal is not to change anything on the property except for the use of the existing structure from a commercial use to a residential use. Being that the site is zoned entryway, the entryway district is designed to enhance the entryway into the city's downtown area, particularly along the arterial streets such as Wood Street. This zoning code encourages a mixed-use environment that blends both residential, commercial, and office spaces with a focus on creating visually appealing and cohesive atmosphere. While the zoning code allows for existing residential uses in the entryway district, it does not support new single-family residential conversions from commercial structures. The Willow's municipal code outlines specific uses that are permitted for the R2 district within the entryway zoning district. Next. Here's just a list of some examples of what those specific uses that are permitted within the R2 district in the entryway zoning district would allow through a conditional use permit. It would include things such as religious schools, nursery schools, daycare, churches, home occupations, golf and country clubs, real estate offices, equipment yards, bed and breakfast. Next. Additionally, the proposed use does not meet the requirements set forth in that section of code. We also have provisions, so staff did explore other ways of looking at the proposal by looking into the non-conforming uses section of the zoning code, specifically subsection nine and 10, which would address residential uses within the entryway district as kind of non-conforming. Those two provisions provide exemption for existing residential structures that were originally constructed as a single-family or multiple-family use before the current zoning code was adopted. And two, it would allow for a vacant undeveloped property in the entryway district to be used as a single-family residential, but only with the approval of a CUP from the Planning Commission with additional criteria. These exemptions are not applicable to this subject property, being that the property was initially constructed as an office commercial building in 1978 and was not a residential structure as well. It's not vacant, so it doesn't qualify for that secondary exemption. Next. So in order to review this request to convert, kind of the only path forward we saw was through a variance request. Through the variance request, there are kind of two sets of findings. One is a legal variance request, and the variance findings are for a variance to the use. And then secondary, we have our findings in the zoning code, which are your standard findings for any kind of variance, which you would typically see for the reduction in setbacks or development standards. So we're looking at a variance to change the use and then also applying the set of findings in the code. Just to kind of briefly go over that real quickly, I won't read word for word, but the findings that we would rely on to approve a variance would be, one, it would have to have no impact on the neighborhood and the applicant would have to demonstrate that the variance would not affect the surrounding properties or in the surrounding neighborhood. The secondary finding under the legal variance use would be, the applicant must prove that the current zoning regulations prevent them from obtaining a reasonable return on their property. Being that the property is zoned for commercial, the existing structure is commercial, that doesn't prevent them from being able to use their property. And then we have a self-created hardship. That means the applicant must prove that the hardship is not self-created. And then lastly, on the variance for use change, impact on the area, the applicant would have to show that the variance will not change the character of the area, especially with the entryway district. It definitely would change some of that existing character of what the intended uses of the entryway would be. The other findings we have listed here are your standard four findings you would need for the variance. That would be, there is an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance or condition applicable to the property. Secondly, that a strict or literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulation would result in difficulty or physical hardship or deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other owners of similar classified zone districts. Third, that granting of the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege. And then fourth, that the granting of the variance or its modification will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Next. So with those findings in mind, staff was unable to make all of those findings which would be required to support the request. With that, the staff recommends that the planning commission deny the request for the variance based on us not being able to make the findings. And I'll stand for any additional questions that you may have.
Current question?
I have lots of comments, but if someone would like to go first, they may.
Okay. You have a question? Then you're on, sir.
Okay. Where does the entryway zone end? At what street?
Yes, I can pull up... I can, well...
Is it Murdoch, Lassen, Plumas, Butte?
It goes beyond, it goes beyond Lassen. I do have a zoning map. I don't know if you're able to share that screen. It's in that folder. Okay. I think the visual would be helpful. That's a great question. That's okay. If we don't have it available, it's okay. It's actually in the folder. It was like, no worries. Yeah, so the entryway district does follow the corridor entering in from the city along Wood Street. And maybe Joe can give me the exact where it ends, but...
Yeah, I don't have the exact ending location of it. I believe that it runs all the way down to where we would hit highway commercial zoning to the west, close to where Humboldt Avenue is. And then to the east, I believe it runs into general commercial. Yep, perfect.
Yes, thank you. If you zoom in right on Wood there, it's sort of that teal color. All the way.
What street is that? It goes clear to Tahama?
Yes, all the way.
Yes. Okay. What does vacant property mean?
The way that we interpreted that was vacant property would be undeveloped property. So not a vacant structure, but the actual property itself being vacant.
I would agree that it should say undeveloped property because currently the building is vacant, so it's very hard to distinguish if you mean uninhabited or unimproved property. My findings are just the opposite of yours. I think staff had presuppositions when they entered into this to figure out what they wanted to do. I don't see any impact in the neighborhood. There are houses and apartments, not only across the street, but down to, I think it is Merrill and Washington. You also have a football field and a track. It's at Merrill and Washington Street where you start actual businesses, and yet there are some houses in there. So I know, having, I've sat in this seat for 13 years, many years ago, we have a very mixed use, and it's hard to say 100% that you want this or that. That's why I asked where the entryway zone ended, because from Murdoch, pretty much east until you get to, see there, is it Butte Street? You have all homes. Then you have the little mini mall and the old 7-Eleven and that type, and a couple of other businesses. In my thinking, the entryway zone should be reduced and not be that far. But I don't see any impact on the neighborhood because there are other houses on each side with no problem. A reasonable return, in my thinking, if it's not rentable, there is no reasonable return. So if he can rent it as a home, there could be a reasonable return. In terms of the applicant, the applicant needs to make sure before he enters into all of this that the planning department or the building department, whoever gives the permits, need to, he need, the applicant needs to know what he wants to do is permissible because otherwise this is worth nothing in that sense. And you also state if there is a need. I know the applicant has stated there is no need for retail property, and if we look around, we see some empty property that is vacant. I do know that homes, it's hard to find a home in Willow's, and the rents are higher because of that. You say it's a self-created hardship. I don't know how it could be a self-created hardship, except that they bought the property hoping to rent it as a commercial business, but it's not rentable and they've owned it for some time. So I believe it is a hardship that they did not create. The impact on the area, as we've stated, there are homes from Lassen West to Merrill and Washington. I don't see there's any impact on the area. You talk about a vision for the entryway zone. That's our vision, not particularly the property owner's vision. And because we have such mixed uses all over town, I kind of discard that one because it's not, I don't think, very applicable. On the next, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. If you or I owned that property and we couldn't rent it, we would say there are exceptional and extraordinary circumstances and conditions. We would want to be able to get a return on our investment. You talked on number two about unnecessary physical hardships would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by others. Currently, the applicant is deprived of privileges others have because there's no conditional use permit, and staff has recommended against it. In my thinking, and this is not to be derogatory to anyone, common sense tells us if a property is not rentable as a business, it should be, it is a difficulty on the individual and a hardship. Number three, special privileges. I don't see that any special privileges are being granted. If anything, they are being denied because there are other homes in that area. Number four, the granting of this variance or its modification will not material, be material detrimental to the public health, where and safety and welfare. I agree with that. So I do feel there's no problem. And then you talk about compelling evidence. The evidence is what you have brought, what our staff has brought, but there's no real data to that evidence. And I would say the same thing to the applicant. I don't know how many times he's tried to rent it. I don't know where it was listed to be rented, how long it was listed to be rented. So there are things there that need to be answered. He has stated there will be no changes to the exterior of the structure. So my question to the applicant, because it has been a business, there is no quote backyard, there's a side yard that is all paved. And, you know, is any of that pavement going to come out? There's no garage. We require a garage on a building. That wasn't even addressed in this document, and I won't address it here. So I would like to ask my other commissioners what they think because I would recommend a CUP for the same reasons that you won't.
Just to confirm, there is no avenue for a conditional use permit through this application as it's explicitly not allowed through our current zoning code. So this is why we went with the land use variance piece of it. So just a point of clarification on that.
My question of looking at one of the images where it shows kind of, I guess where they would park if it was residential, there's a truck and there's a white car next to it. Is that a business next to it?
Which side?
Mr. Chairman, if I may address you. Correct, it is a duplex next door, and if the request in front of us was for a duplex, there would be an avenue to move forward. It's the request for a single-family home that specifically fronts Wood Street in the entryway district is why we're in this various territory we're in today.
And I think that's kind of where I'm going with the direction of, you know, he's probably noticing that duplex there, and he's trying to understand why he's getting denied. So I mean, that could be information if it was denied today, information provided to them, like if you were to move forward, you know, this could be an avenue of maybe trying to go. And also, you know, like he's talking about data, has he tried to sell the property? Was he trying to rent it for how long? Just to kind of get an idea, because I mean, I'm thinking of his business owner, he might want to, you know, sell it as well. So that's kind of where my thoughts were at.
Also, my understanding is the property was rented up until, I think, February of 2024, so it has been used as a business. And then the second thing I want to say is if we were to grant that, and wouldn't there be a lot of expenses? Don't you have to come to code to make that a home? You can't just rent a business building as a home.
And just to clarify, the existing homes that are in that district were grandfathered in when that entryway district came. We're not going to come in and tell somebody to tear down their house because they're in a commercial district. The code speaks to, once you butt Wood Street and you are a commercial business, you will not go back to a residential business. That's kind of the main issue. And then, so that gets him out of the conditional use process through those not being allowed exceptions. There are a couple of exceptions. You'll notice that there's a modular behind his building that we've been dealing with. Well, there's an exception for that because it doesn't about Wood Street, so therefore they were allowed to do a conditional use permit. What we're dealing with here is no avenue for a conditional use permit, so therefore he's required to meet the land use variances, which Delaney went through, and, you know, we don't feel those were met. And the hardship requirements, I mean, just to speak to those, it is unfortunate they've been unable to rent their building, but to change the zoning code because somebody's can't rent their building out as a business, I don't think is a practice that we want to get into.
Other comments?
I guess in some ways, I would suggest that we continue this as much as I don't want to, so that we could get some more information from the applicant. One is the remodeling that he wants to do, will it be permissible? We need to have some kind of document to show us that it has been listed to rent. We're being told it is not rentable. Well, I don't know that because I haven't seen any documentation on that. And I would agree to some extent that you don't want a business to go back to residential, but we have mixed uses around here, which is a nightmare for all of us. I guess that, I, that's where I kind of stand, is that we need some more information to make a really good decision. If there's other information that staff thinks is important that we have, but the two that I said, the permits and a document that shows the listing, it could be way overpriced, and maybe that's why it won't sell. I don't know. I don't know what a building like that is assessed at or what it would sell for.
And we did ask the applicant to provide that information as a part of, you know, there, we request the information from them, and then Delaney's responses were how that information fell short. So for the economic hardship and everything that she went through, that information was requested from the applicant, maybe not specific documentation as you're requesting, but that's what we provided to the applicant to essentially provide back to us to take this item to you. So we found that incomplete and not substantiated on those hardships.
I'm going to give you an illustration. And you are aware of this, I'm sure. We have to help people. We are public servants. If they don't give us adequate information, we need to call them and let them know, and perhaps you did, I don't know.
We did multiple times, yes, correct.
My wife used to have to remind teachers to get their teaching credential renewed. Other people would say, well, they know they need to get it renewed, why don't they do it? They don't. So she would have to stay on people to get their teaching credential renewed or tell them, if you don't get this renewed, you won't be teaching. We do have to hold the hands of people sometimes, and whether we want to or not, that's a fact of life. That's why dentists and doctors phoned us the day before to remind us of our appointment because too many people have missed because they forgot. I've forgotten. So that's why I asked for a continuation to get more documentation. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
And there is emails and the memo that we wrote to them in the packet explaining why we didn't find their information complete and requesting additional information.
I understand what you're saying, but on the other hand, they requested this be put on, so therefore they're aware of what they want on. The dialogue also falls to them, their responsibility. It's not, oh, remember, you filed this. They filed it. They have to take some responsibility in this.
I would agree, but I also believe that staff has to take a responsibility, and I'm not being critical, maybe you did, and call and say, I need this and this by such and such time.
There's, the email demonstrates that, yep. So we made multiple efforts to get the information. We told them that we would not be recommending this and honestly hoped that they wouldn't bring it because we didn't feel that there was a case for it. They wanted to proceed to the planning commission with the information that they provided, so we agendized the item for today. So we made multiple attempts to request additional information. They were good with what they had provided to us. We told them what our recommendation was going to be, provided that which is in the packet, and they insisted on coming to the public hearing today to make their case.
Thank you. I'm happy to know that. I guess I, my feeling is let's give them one more chance to give us that information. If they don't get it to us, then the conversation is over. If they give it to us, then we can consider it.
If I can speak for a minute, the only thing that really comes to mind is the financial aspect of it. It seems like it would cost quite a bit more to, if we were to do this switch, it would cost a lot more to bring it back up to standards for it to be livable, which it seems like, based on what we, what they did give us, is that it's already the amount of money that they're spending on just owning the property is a little too much for them. I think how Mr. Chair, Mr. Bobadilla over there mentioned that perhaps them looking at different avenues of what to do. Uh, I think how um, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Bovady over there mentioned that perhaps um them looking at different avenues of what to do with the property would probably be. A better choice for them. But I think that given with what we have here, uh, there's substantial information that reflects that there's. Going the other way is probably not financially um a good choice for them.
But that's where the finding out if the things they want to do are permissible and also how much they would cost. That would help the applicant to know how feasible or non-feasible it would be.
I have a quick question. Um, if denied, they can revisit um the project or is it just done?
Yeah, I, I would say it would be a final decision. I'm not, I don't have the legal opinion on that. I can check on that for you, but.
But if they came at, at was like um a duplex scenario, that's a whole new different, you know, avenue.
Mr. Chair, that would be correct. If it was a different project request, um, like the duplex would fall underneath a conditional use permit request. If they came back for this exact variance request after it had already been denied, we couldn't hear it twice. Um, that being said, I just to note that there is, you know, the zoning code updates on the horizon.
Yeah.
Um, the entryway district can definitely be addressed through zoning code updates, just keeping that at the forefront of the commissioner's minds. Um, you know, keep, that could also be an avenue down the road that there's modifications to the code to allow more flexibility. Um, if that's the desire.
Yeah, that's kind of the other question that zoning review coming up.
But the zoning codes would grandfather the use that it currently is in. It would be acceptable. And we can continue anything that we vote to continue. It doesn't have to be final tonight.
I'm gonna open up to the public if we have no other questions.
No, I'm good.
Any public uh comments?
This is your son-in-law, Bo Shao. And uh. I beg to differ with Joe. We've had three applications. We filled them out. We submitted plans. Five copies of the original plan with an application to add a shower. As far as the cost of converting this to a house, the only difference is bathroom would have GFI. In it for the outlet and the kitchen would have GFIs. That's a simple installation. As far as it has two bathrooms, there's three sinks in the place, three or four sinks in the place. So all it needs is a shower. That's a real simple installation. It has gas. It, it is in effect, looks like a three-bedroom house. And we have filled out applications and the last application was supposed to be emailed to me and they had the wrong email address. And uh, so we responded in a manner applicants review and scheduling. We're responding to your March twenty fourth email. We started this with the first conversation in December, then January and February. The price was arrived at a thousand twenty-five to review this process. Okay, so we've, we've filled out the applications every time. We've responded in a manner. That we thought was what they're asking for. So. We responded to the March twenty-fourth email to be on the agenda on the sixth, when the email finally came. And the planners in coordination, because the proposed use does not meet requirements for various. Uh, per Jessica Scholl, we have expressed previous hardship issues and wish to proceed regardless of the history of the property. You know, it looks like a house, smells like a house. You walk in, you think this is a house. It meets every standard. I've been building houses for sixty-three years. And this looks like a house. It looks like an office. There's no difference. So. Public hearing and fees, we paid the thousand twenty-five on February twentieth, tenth. And we've provided information as the best of our knowledge, but we also have a civil engineer. And I'll tell you his history. He's responded as well. He's an employee of Chastity of Caltrans. But I need to tell you something about their history. In response to our application, we asked for similar information and seemed to feel it's our problem or we're unwilling to proceed in a public meeting. We've asked to be on the agenda for three months in a row. Three months. We wanted to come here and speak to you on this because we disagree with the way the um code reads, which is your municipal code. It looks like a house. What's the difference? If it's rented, that's a benefit, but we have problems. I have warehouses and renting. One property is twenty-seven thousand five hundred feet of warehouse. I have a man there who's a black belt in karate and he watches things. If it weren't for him, we would have squatters coming in all the time and stealing. Um, we have warehouses, we in renting also, and we have apartments and we have houses. We have seven houses here in Willows. And we're quite observant at cost. We know what costs are. I've been doing this my entire life. And the cost to convert this to a house is very minimal. It's very minimal. You're familiar with on South Shasta Street. What's the address? Four forty-five Shasta Street. That was the Manhattan that sucker burned because of poor management. And the people that were in it were drug users and they burnt the whole roof off. So we worked with Clay Dolly. I drew up the plan, showed him the engineering that I generated for him and we rebuilt that eighteen ninety-three. An eighteen ninety-three house rewired, replumbed. And it, and, and Bo has come up with some fantastic design. So everybody has a bathroom. They were sharing three units, were sharing one bathroom and it was approved. Now, everybody has their own bathroom. It's a nice facility. So we disagree with your existing uses do not on their own justify approval of new use that does not conform to current zoning standards. The hardship is very reasonable and expensive, approximately five thousand dollars per year. It turns out it's more like six thousand dollars a year for taxes, insurance, utilities, maintenance, because she's paying without generating any rent. That's a hardship. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about these two people. There's no demand for commercial property. And I refer to this letter from a Chinese Realtor because she speaks Mandarin. So Loncho here needs somebody who speaks Mandarin. And so it says. I was the listing agent five ten Wood Street, Willows from nine thirteen twenty-four to three thirteen twenty-five, three thirty twenty-five. Do it as commercial property or there were not many activities. Most called asked if they could live in it. It's been listed on and off for several years. In reviewing neighbors' properties across the street, there's a beauty salon in a house. She has a variance to her use permit. It's a house built in the commercial zone. A, a house can be built if you have vacant land. You can build a house in a commercial zone. You can convert that commercial property to commercial property from a resident. We understand. Goz explained it well. If you have a commercial building that looks like a house, you can't make it a house. That doesn't make any sense at all to me. That's not make any sense. So we want that changed. Uh, the beauty shop across the street, we spoke to her and she has a variance and so on. And we spoke to her neighbor. Who's an elderly woman and I'm elderly. You know, you get close to eighty or they call you elderly. And she wants a house over there. She is worried constantly. She sees homeless people sneaking behind it, pooping the weeds and make a mess. And we don't want squatters in there. When I was younger, we evicted squatters physically. Well, now it's six months. We don't want to go through that ordeal. We spoke to another lady across the street and expressed frustration that remains a vacant space and would become a home and not a business vacancy. She is concerned that the type of business might be of negative impact to the neighborhood such as. And she listed some places she did not want. She would not appreciate. That I have talked to over twenty people who have signed a petition and are in favor of conversion to a business. I talked to all the neighbors. They think it's a house. They think it's appropriate to make it a house. The impact on the neighborhood, the proposed use will improve the neighborhood by eliminating vacancy and potential vagrancy. Reasonable return, the reason, the current zoning regulations prevent us from receiving a reasonable return on the property as a business under commercial zoning. It's not viable use. We have people who want to have a, a group in there called the Boys and Girls USA. They might be able to get a thousand a month, maybe twelve hundred a month. So she'll almost break even after expenses. And uh, the self-created hardship as. Are you that stupid that you made a bad investment and you're blaming the city? No, we thought it was a viable investment. We've got. Seven houses here and we thought this might be a good investment. Hardship we're creating is as a result of advice of Realtors and others in the community suggesting possible likely rental. We found this not the case as there are no demand for commercial property because developments such as the site reservoir and. Residential subdivisions have not come to fruition. The city must understand the circumstances that are beyond our control rather than by our choices. And the impact on the area, current office will not alter the character of the neighborhood because it looks like a house and will not create conflicts in the area. I want to tell you something, if I may. Bo Shaw's father is a very, very intelligent man. He's a mechanical person, but he grew up in Communist China. And so he worked on a farm with a commissar in charge. And the bulk of the rice that they produced and anything else they produced went to the government. And to satisfy the government and gain accolades with the administration, the communist administration, his father would work daylight till dark. Get a, like the equivalent of a mason jar with about three cents worth of rice for an all-day effort. And that's how it was in Communist China. Bo, he went to school as a kindergartner in the nineteen eighties. This is not long ago, in the eighties. They could not afford eggs, so they sold the eggs from their chickens. And his father would go fishing at night. He'd work twelve hours during the day in the rice fields for minimum wage, using. An animal to plow the fields. And then at night he would go and fish. And the fish that would be pumped onto the rice field would be cut up into pieces. That saved him some effort. And they would eat those fish. And when he started going to school, he's a very intelligent person. He had to wear his older sister's dress. And when you grew up on a farm in China, you could have more than one child. And that was legal, but you could not come into the city. And if you wanted to go from Red柳 to. Willows, you had to have special permission from the government or you'd be arrested. And if you did that. To go visit family in another town, they would come into your home, which happened to them, and they would take your toaster if you had one. They didn't. But they would take your possessions as a fine. That's how he grew up. When he started school, he had to wear his sister's dresses. The older boys had put dirt in his ears and his mouth and pick on it. And he went through that system, matriculated through a master's, a bachelor's degree. And he took the test and passed the engineering exam for Caltrans the first time through, first time through. That's a record. My son's an engineer with Caltrans. Had no influence on whether he got the job. He did it of his own unmerited. This lady here, she broke the laws in China. She was a public servant in China. She had one child, the one-child policy. You live in city, it's one child. Her hardship was she got pregnant. She had another baby on the way. She had to go into hiding. She lost her job. She had to hide in her sister's home. For fear, if they caught her anywhere, they'd haul her in and do a forced abortion. They know hardship. They know absolute hardship. When they came to America, she worked in a casino with her son and her daughter. And the son and daughter. And she had a wooden chair. They stacked three of them together and they sleep between shifts and work sixteen-hour days. Just to get by on a minimum wage in Sparks. When the casinos shut down through bankruptcy, they were without work. Minimum wage work. So they came to Reading. The reason the casinos shut down was because the Indian casinos took over and so regrouping. They understood hardship. The purchase of this property was through hard work. She works sixteen hours a day. She does. She just doesn't get to sleep. This is a worry. I say, how'd you do last night? Oh, I go to sleep three o'clock. Very sad, very sad. So much pressure. So I have a statement from her and I appreciate your listening to this. Want to say anything?
Please speak into the mic.
Uh, any needles and everybody, good evening. My name is Loncho. And uh, I have a um five one O in this Wall Street. So you have given me a larger, larger the, the precious stress. So uh, any night I can't sleep, I hope that, you know, I wonder everybody help me sort of this apartment. And um, I'm not much English. I just reading it down. Can I give everybody?
I'll read it to you as you're getting this. Bo is a citizen. He served eight years in the air force. He's become a citizen. His brother-in-law, her son, is a citizen and he's got his citizenship. And he's qualified as an air conditioning mechanic, but he was born illegally in China, so he did not have the opportunity for college. And he didn't live on a farm, so there could only be one child. They know hardship. So it is, I am Mrs. Loncho, owner of five ten West Wood Street. I sincerely appreciate your willingness to properly address the situation regarding the building at five ten West Wood Street. Could be in my, in my and the community's best interest to change the property from commercial use to residential use. I believe that this property was originally zoned residential. I have maintained this property in good condition and I am a responsible owner. It's been mowed and now we have gardening service, but we haven't turned the water on, so we'll hope to do that. I have owned five ten Wood Street for the past nine years. I've only been able to rent this building to tenants for four of the past nine years. It has been vacant for five years for the past nine years and remains vacant now. I continue to suffer substantial costs, including property and taxes, insurance, utilities, maintenance and landscaping. Total at least six thousand dollars annually with increases in insurance premiums and other costs. These financial pressures are becoming increasingly burdensome. Persistently vacant properties in Willows are determined detrimental to both the local economy and otherwise positive image of Willows. Please note that the surrounding area is primarily residential. Many individuals interested in leasing this property have expressed desire to use it as living space with little demand for commercial use. The ongoing vacancy poses both the risk of deterioration and potential security concerns. By promptly again designating the building for residential use, we would both only enhance neighborhood safety and aesthetic appeal. This would also contribute positively to the community and help alleviate the local housing shortage. Properly housed families and affordable housing support the local economy. Chronically vacant properties do not. This change would yield mutual benefits. It would alleviate financial burdens. While also providing the government with increased tax revenue and much-needed additional single-family residential housing. Forcing this building's current status to remain commercial and vacant may ultimately lead to resource waste. And missed opportunities for our community. As a sixty-four-year-old property owner and widow, I find myself in a very financially difficult situation. Please give your understanding and support to change this property back to residential use. This would significantly improve the long-term success this neighborhood and economic vitality of Willows. I greatly appreciate your time and support to help Willow's economy, community image and. Mitigate this continuing financial burden. Now, that's pretty amazing translating from Mandarin to English. She's well-spoken. She was in government leadership in China, local community. She was a policeman. And uh, there's no guns. He had a taser, never had to use it. She could negotiate with people that were having troubles. And their families and, and they elevated, but then she got pregnant, lost that. So I want to introduce Bo Shaw.
Thank you. I wrote, wrote a little note. I think I feel already um, 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 cover everything, so I don't think I have to repeat. Um, I'm Bo Shaw. Um, I'm Lanjo's son-in-law, so I'm here to support Lanjo's application. I used to live in Willows and working Willows uh, back in twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, I believe. Yeah, working at Bureau of Recreation, Willow's office um in Wood Street. So, so Willows always gave me a, like a really clean, a neat impression, like whenever I, I pull, like driving and drive out. I think is, is um, the city is um, um, it's not like Reading or Chico, like a lot of like homelessness issues of. That's why I always like feel um, um, I'm connect, I'm, I'm, I'm connect with um Willow's. So that's why I, I'm not also, um, I'm, I'm gonna just um speak, speak my, uh, mother, you know, also. Speak for uh, as a, a person who cares about Willow's, so. Um, this is hoping um to get that variance approved and. He can get a talent in there and keep that property um maintained, like property maintained. So not like a, like abandoned or vacant property, like people drive, drive by and look at, oh, that's not. It's not, appearance is not really good. And that's what I'm trying to say. And, and Joe mentioned about, we might have some requirements that we want to comply. I think we're willing to do anything that to meet all those technical requirements. And I think that's all, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, get a question.
If for some odd reason, we would grant this and you tried to rent it and you could not rent it, what would you do?
We have so many people asking. We just have a continuous stream of people asking. My daughter is Suzie Martin. And she can tell you, Dr. Dennis Asbury, Dennis is a good friend. He knows there's a market. And we're identified as a house, a housing deficient county. That's pretty well-known.
And you also have to put a kitchen in, I believe I heard you say.
Well, there's a sink, so you put a stove and a refrigerator.
Are there cabinets?
Yeah, there's cabinets inside.
You have to put a vent in, you have to vent the stove?
Not a big deal. It's not thousands of dollars.
No.
What about garage?
I'm through hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have you guys actually tried to sell the property at all?
Oh, yes, yes. How many years she's tried to sell, two years? That property is about 1,400 square feet, okay? So housing is generally $300 a square foot for a house. A modest house is $300 a square foot. I've built houses for $500,000, for $500 a square foot. I mean, just palaces in Reading. But $300 a square foot. When I started, I remember when we got $20 a square foot for houses. I've been at it a long time. I remember when concrete went from $12 to $15 a yard. I thought that was going to put us out of business. Had no idea inflation during Vietnam, cost of copper was out of sight. So if you figure 1,400 square feet, that's $420,000 to replace the property. That land is worth about 40 grand. I don't know what Joe would have cost for a water meter, but in Reading, in Centerville District is $15,000 for a 5/8 meter. $15,000. This has meter, it has sewer and has water. It has everything, it has gas. So you're looking at a $460,000 property and she's listed it for how much? $249. That's half price.
What was it purchased for? What was it purchased for?
125, eight years ago. We had to replace the sewer line that extended from the parking lot about, I don't know, how many feet was that? 80 feet, 100 feet? And, and we worked with Public Works Director and he said, get her done. Because at the property management, they said the toilet backed up. So we ran a camera down. We put an 8-inch sewer line down between the houses. And the guy next to us with the duplex, or no, with the modular. Yeah, yeah, we painted. So there's, there's an 8-inch sewer line behind that modular.
I have a question. So I'm noticing that the design here that you have, so you have, you say you have two bathrooms. So one of those bathrooms you're gonna convert to be able to make the kitchen?
No. No.
This is not the design.
No, we don't need to do that. No, 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 hold on. The cabinet is in the break room, I guess you'd call it, there's a sink there. So all you do is walk across that room and put a refrigerator and a range and a hood. That's all.
Okay, what I'm hearing is a lot of unknowns. And I think a lot of unknown of what would it take to make it up to code if it was passed? When I hear there is communication from Joe, you said maybe there is a wrong email? And maybe that's where the break of communication might have happened?
We've not been asked how much cost it would be to convert to a house.
It's not, it's not relevant to the, to the application, honestly. None of the conversion to a house is relevant. It's about the land use designation, does not allow a house to be on it. The economic hardship would be needed to relate to zoning and how the zoning is limiting that and making that hardship. And that case wasn't sufficiently made by the applicant. So we're kind of going down a really long road of what-ifs on housing conversion, when I don't really think that applies too much to this conversation regarding the ability to convert to a house.
So, so we haven't addressed hardship sufficiently?
Correct.
A loss of $8,000 a year or $6,000 a year is not a hardship?
It's specific to how the zoning would cause that hardship, not just a lot of businesses don't make money, a lot of rentals don't get rented. And it's, if there's, there's very specific legal requirements and our, our planners build that that was not made. We're not in the business of, we want to help these applicants as much as possible. Our code is very specific. It allows, the reason it looks like a house is because our design standards in the entryway say you must build your business to look like a residential house. The reason that there's houses in that residential district is because they're allowed to be there because their grandfather did. The goal of the entryway district, as you read it and the way that the code is interpreted, it is meant to move to a commercial, a more commercial manner. Yes, it's mixed use now. Of course, we're not going to tell you to tear down your old Victorian house because we want this to be a commercial use. But it's made to state that if you're off of Wood Street and it's empty land, there are, there are ways to do a conditional use permit. If you are on Wood Street and you are a red, you're currently a commercial business, there is no avenue to go back to a residential besides a very hard threshold of a land use variance. So that, that, and I understand the hardships. I mean, I don't want to see anybody go through an economic struggle. It's the fact that the, the way the code was written and the way that it's intended to be applied is to move that entryway district into a more commercial space and not allow, you know, if a Victorian house were to burn down across the street, that abuts Wood Street, they would go through this same process to, they would not be able to build that house back again. Because it was no longer a residential. It's not grandfathered into when the code was adopted.
And just stating that like, there is going to be a zoning review.
Absolutely.
If we put them on pause and not denied and whatever changes that were made to the zoning that would give you an opportunity to then come back. I mean, that seems would might be a fair judgment today. Because as it states, is the zoning, current zoning?
We understand it's the current zoning problem. And what we're saying is change the zoning so that it works for her. I worked for Shasta County Public Works. I retired from construction in 93. This is germane to this issue. We found that Shasta County was using Assembly Bill 87, which you're not acquainted with, but it was for tracking grant funds to the Sheriff's Department and other departments, Public Works for special help. And they were using that as a general budget standard. And my department, I had a million square feet of buildings and I was overseeing all of those buildings. And we were using 87 for funds. And it doubles the cost with the overhead. And our, Ed Davis was our auditor and I asked Ed, what is our overhead? Have you ever calculated that? No, because you don't have a cost accounting system. So I met with the Board of Supervisors, made a presentation to adopt the Uniform Cost Accounting for Shasta County, which is a statewide adoption, to change the code in Shasta County. You can change the code here. You know, it doesn't work.
There's a plan to start reviewing that.
Yeah, that's what we're asking for. We've answered every question that they've asked us in the forums. And we have a civil engineer who's responding to it. He's highly intelligent. So we're asking you to change the rules. And Joe can't change the rules. He needs you to change the rules.
And I believe we have a meeting to have that discussion, so I'd be at a further time. That's why we're asking for a, maybe a continuance for you, not a denial. But that's so that you know, that might be an avenue. But as it stands, I mean, the code would not pass it.
Yeah, the current code doesn't, so we need to change the code.
I have a question for Joe. Joe, if I'm understanding you correctly, and I hope I am, we have no language in our codes to change a commercial building back to a residential? Or is it because of the overlay of the entryway zone?
We have a specific language that does not allow a residential, a commercial property to go to residential with certain.
Well, then why do we have home use permits in residential areas?
Home, like a home occupation?
Yeah.
That's, that's allowed by a conditional use permit in a residential.
Yeah, and that's what we're asking here, that they would get a conditional use permit to have that as a home.
There's specific language for the entryway district that prevents a commercial building to go back to residential.
Well, if you heard what I said earlier, I found all of the negatives that was in the staff's support as positives of why they could do it.
It's just an, an application of the, the code.
That's why I would say like, continue in the work on the code.
I, I agree with you in, in that way. We want to give these people a halfway chance. And if, if the code doesn't allow it, then we have to work on that to find out in a public hearing if people want something like that. And then we have to make a decision whether we want it.
They, they have come before us, a couple of months ago.
Well, I don't have that privilege, unfortunately.
But I'm just saying this is not the first time. So obviously there has been communication. Obviously, they must know each other's emails and things like that. Because they did come.
And the email that Bill was stating where it was incorrectly sent, it was a wrong email addressed to Bill, but the applicants themselves received the email.
Well, my point is, there has been dialogue.
Absolutely, yeah, it's documented in this. And back to the entryway question, you know, it's, it's a, it's a general commercial with an entryway overlay, not a residential zone. So our latest land use map in the general plan would list that as a, as a general commercial element. So it lends itself more to a commercial element than it does a residential. And that being updated in our general plan that was recently passed, again lends itself to developing it more as a commercial while allowing the existing residents to exist for future development to be commercial.
So as I understand it, if you have raw land in a commercial zone, you can build a house.
In the entryway zone, if you have, if you have land that is undeveloped and meets certain requirements, it doesn't abut Wood Street, there is a conditional use permit you could apply for.
So you can build a house on raw land in a commercial zone, right?
That's not on Wood Street. No, no, commercial zones, you cannot build a house. There's, that's entryway zone. Yeah. Entryway zone, yep. So the specifics to the entryway zone would allow you to build a house on vacant land that doesn't abut Wood Street. That's the exceptions that are there with, with the Approval Planning Commission, with the conditional use permit.
So you can build a house in the
Entryway zone if the, if the parcel doesn't abut Wood Street and that there's some other.
And if it was a house before it went to commercial, you can come back to a house.
But it's the Wood Street component that's kind of.
Well, but if you have a house in the Wood Street entryway, there was a house that went to commercial. A house down the street from us went from a real estate office back to residential because it was a residential. This was built as a commercial building, but it doesn't look any different than any other house, except that it's got a glass front door.
That's because that's what the design called for. I feel like, I'd like to make a motion and then you guys can deny it or whatever. But I'd like to make a motion that we denied the land use variance.
Yeah, we should probably limit public comments. We've been about 15 minutes into this one.
Make a motion and more, more, I can make the motion and then there can be more comments.
Okay, we're gonna really limit the comments to three.
Could she make a comment or she says sound?
I want, I want to say my building already the normally rental is, we saw that this is the stuff, one of the five years. So five years I lose the money and also government lose the tax too. And even you know pass this time, I don't know how to do it. I wonder, any needles, everybody told me how to do it, how to go make this working.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments?
I can make a motion and then there can be.
She can make a motion, right?
Typically, you would want to close the public comment period prior. So if it's still open, I would recommend completing that first.
Who else is gonna be making public comment? Okay, one, two, three, right?
My name is Dennis Asbury. I was born and raised here. I've been involved with the community, with Lions Club and other groups, doing a lot of volunteer work, trying to get our community back together. I've been contracting for over 40 years. And we've had a, I need to start off. I don't know that I know anybody up here except Keith. I met Joe last year. So what I've got to say doesn't involve anybody here. But we've had over 20 years of a planner that tried to turn us into Danville, California. And it's just not working out because we're dying more all the time. We're fighting over a building that we have a ton of commercial buildings not being used now down in the central part of, of Willows. We have commercial, commercial out on the freeway. What we do have a need for, and there's areas where it can be addressed through the state and through HUD, is housing. And they can come in and override a lot of our stupid little rules and regulations we've got because we're designated as an extreme housing need. Okay? We have a building on the next corner. There was a insurance office for over 20 years and we took it out, made it back into a home. The duplex was a real estate office for over 20 years. It's back into a home. I knew Harry James and Nancy when they built that. And I've been in it many times and Harry at the time said, well, if it doesn't work out, I'll just turn it into a house and I'll rent it. Because we didn't have this Danville zoning up and down Wood Street at that time. So it wasn't built to look like what they're building out there now. It was built because Harry was a contractor and because he knew he had alternative options. Okay? Our zoning, we could have had a Jack in the Box four or five years ago. But it didn't meet the zoning required for Danville, California. We asked Jack in the Box to make some changes to their building, which was pretty unrealistic. You know, I, like I say, I've been building for over 40 years. We used to have, we would take our plans in. If something needed engineered, we'd get it engineered. We'd get our building permit, we'd build it. If we had a problem, we'd go and talk to the, to the building official at the time. And he may say, well, maybe get this other piece engineered. Or he would work it over. Building officials have a ton of latitude. They have a book, just like a Bible, that they try and go through every darn time. But things come up and they have latitude. They can make a decision that, yeah. The 2020 code keeps us from rebuilding this house because it would have to have a sprinkler system. That's fine. And this happened in Orleans. The building inspector and I met out there, we looked at the house and he said, what's the problem? And I said, there is no problem. We just need to know, are we going to be enforced on a 2012 code or a 2020 code? And he said, you're talking about the fire extinguishers in the house, the fire system. And he said, you know, what's the alternative? And I said, the alternative is we're at a breaking point of $85,000 to rebuild the fire damage. If we have to put another $8,000 to $10,000 in for the sprinkler, the guy will take the money and walk. And then you've got a burned-out hole on your hands for the next 10 years. We've had that happen in Willows. We've had houses where the city thought it would be in their best interest to run up the bill on it and they're gonna put a lien on it. That didn't work out good for us either. Our whole thing in the city, in the planning commission is where it starts. He said very well, we need to be helping people. I've done this 40 years and I still go in to get a permit or something like that on something that's a little different. I have to ask a lot of questions. Sometimes. Sometimes two or three times visits to find out exactly what it is you want, because what I'm turning in is not what's making you happy. And the thing I hate worse, and I've heard it here tonight at least five times, the cost of turning that into a house is ridiculous. That's none of your business. That's none of their business. That belongs to that lady right over there. That's her job. If she wants to spend a million bucks on it. That doesn't affect anybody else in this room. Okay? We have an extreme need for rentals in this, in this area. Uh, I know I've got rentals. I could raise the rent tremendously on them. But we bought them right. We fixed them right. And we try and rent them right so they can afford to live in them.
Thanks, Dennis, uh, in consideration of everybody else's time.
And the question about the finance, cause she made a, you know, it was a expense burden, so just to kind of put it in perspective.
I'm sorry, one more, just for clarification. When you're building a house, if you've got a heater, you've got fresh water, only cold, and a stove to cook on, you're allowed to move into that house. So technically they could put a stove and a refrigerator in there and they've already met code. That's not what they're asking to do. They're asking to do it right.
Okay, uh, next person was up. And, uh, please respect the time.
My name is Mike Murray. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you please restate your name?
Pardon?
Your name?
Mike Murray.
Thank you.
M U R R A Y. My concern about this project, uh, because I'm a neighbor, is that uh, the sewer system is not set up for another residence. If you look at the modular that's split in half on Lassen Street. The reason that the developer hasn't put that together is because he was planning on, on hooking into an existing, I'm gonna call it an outlaw line, okay? It's because it's not supported by the city. And the reason that line is there in the first place, I'll give you a little history. There was no line on, on Lassen Street at all. The closest line was on Murdoch. So anyway, let me go back to the split, uh, house there, the modular. The planning commission, one of the conditions on that, one of the condition, on his conditional use permit, was that he hooked the sewer line up. He get an easement to the property in back of him and, and run it all the way to Murdoch Street. Okay? Now, I was there, uh, when he, when, I'm sorry, his name, John. Pardon? Bill, when Bill did the sewer, I watched it. He did a great job. A nice big, how big was the line, Bill? Eight inch? Yeah, so not in my line. No. My line, an eight inch line goes into, to my 1923 line. Okay. That is egg shaped. Um, when's the last time you saw a camera? I saw a camera probably a couple of years ago. Very restricted, very restricted. Uh, so here's my point. The property is an office. The office is gonna use the bathroom a lot less than a residence will. And I just don't, I don't think that that line will sustain another residence. It wouldn't sustain the modular. Nothing has changed since that. So I, I think you should really consider that. You know, it's, it's, I have a selfish reason, okay? I want to flush my toilet. It's that simple.
Thank you.
Any questions?
We have some other comment and you, you want to comment to him? Yeah, can, can we, yeah, to the mic?
Is this relevant to the sewer line or relevant to the issue at hand? Well, I think we probably should stay on task here.
Yeah, let's, um, get the comments.
Allow other public comment here.
So, um, in Chastity County where we had disputes over a sewer line or water service and so on, we created the municipal sewer district of six houses. Everybody paid additional tax, so they don't have the entire burden of repairing sewer. And there's, how many houses on it now? And the office, there's a potential of five houses, five houses. If everybody contributes a thousand dollars a year or, or whatever, then the burden doesn't fall on them. It's used. But the problem for the guy with the modular is now he's expected to tunnel under the driveway to the street adjacent or opposite Lassen and put a pump station in there. So he doesn't use this sewer. The solution is to correct this sewer. If there's problems, to correct the sewer. And create a district, municipal district that's, you know, five houses, six houses, whatever it is. So the burden isn't on them, because everybody's willing to pay their fair share. And they should. It shouldn't fall on them. They had to do that repair at the end of the street. Okay?
So it would really be nice if everybody was willing to do their fair share. Okay? Talk to my neighbors.
Yeah.
It ain't gonna happen though. I just spent $7,000. On a, to redo it, you know, so it was backed up and it was backed up for everybody. But I fixed it for them too. And that's a great idea. The sewer district, I looked into that. I talked to the lawyer about it. Uh, it's just not feasible. The answer is to repair that line from the back of my garage all, all the way out to the, uh, street, plus maybe 150 foot, you know? Probably, yeah. So, you know, that's the answer.
Yeah.
But I, I can't do that in hell, but I'm not gonna do it.
Well, and it's not just your line, it's Willows. I've been to city council meetings where they've talked about the sewer.
Yeah.
Conditions in general, when they were talking about the barn.
And it's, it's like I say, it's an outlaw line. Residents there put it in, you know, uh, years, we do a 1923, I'll come there. Anyway.
All right, thank you for your comment. Uh, who was the next on the, there you go? And we had one more after that? Okay, and then I'll close up the public comment.
Harriet Gomez, 463 Westwood Street. I live right across the street from, uh, the building in question. And the only difference that I, I would see that would happen would be that the sign would come down. But I keep, but I, anyway, my thoughts aren't all together, but, uh, it has off-street parking. Uh, it would be nice to see it rented. Um, and, uh, and I think that in 1978, when it was built, they had to get a variance on, uh, to be able to put a commercial building there. And they changed the zoning laws to do that. And I remember coming to a city council meeting for that purpose, 1978 or 77, one of the two. Thank you.
I don't think you.
Hello, my name is Ashley Wagaman Hernandez. And sadly, this is my first city council meeting ever. Um, I'm not, never, I didn't originally come here for this matter. I, um, I came here for the one that's coming next. Um, but I didn't want to stay silent. Uh, I used to work for a company called Bullseye Bell Bonds. I was a bell agent for them, run by, uh, owner Mike Velassa out of Sacramento. That's where his company is still at. Um, he tried to open a bell agency here in Willows where he leased that, the property in question for a year. Business wasn't booming, I'm sure you can imagine, uh, but why, why I'm saying this is because the person that was managing his business here did live at that residence illegally while renting through Titus for an entire year. Had parties there, multiple people there, including myself, you know, staying the night or whatnot. So although it doesn't have a stove, we did have a fridge. It had a complete living room, bedrooms, two toilets, multiple sinks, and people did live there for over a year illegally. So that's just all I wanted to say, just in case this gets continued and I'm not there. I just wanted to speak my piece on it.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, we're gonna close the public comment, 721. And vote, please, for a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Yes.
Sorry for jumping the gun. Um, I move that we deny a land use variance filed B 25 dash 01 to establish a residential land use on a parcel currently zoned for commercial use on the property located at 510 Westwood Street, identified by assessor's parcel number APN 002 dash 081 dash 002.
Can I get a second to that?
Oh, second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor of, um,
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call on this? And can we all just be in favor if we get a roll call?
All right. Sorry about that. I wasn't prepared. Commissioner Ocampo?
We can't hear you.
Commissioner Ocampo? I can't hear you.
That's a no.
That's a no. Okay. Sorry. Um, Commissioner Coram?
No.
Commissioner Bratt?
Aye.
Vice Chair Valencia?
Aye.
And Chair Bobadia?
I'm gonna say no. I just want to give them the opportunity to, uh, continue that. That just feels right.
You want to make a motion for that?
Uh, wanna make that motion to continue that?
Uh, yes, I, I, you can add to it. Would make a motion that we continue it to see if we can't figure out how to let the applicant change it back to residential. Um, and, um, also, I guess that would be it.
Yeah, and then kind of based off that zoning review to add into that? Okay, can I get a second on that?
I'd like to open up discussion.
Okay, uh, open up for discussion?
I'm curious because you're using the zoning review and because that's something that could take some time. Because we don't know how long it's gonna take for us to get all of our codes up. I just want to point that out.
And that's kind of what, what, uh, my thought is, but giving that an option for them so that they know there's gonna be a chance.
Nothing happens at this time.
Well, as you heard me say earlier, I found all the things that the staff is against as for it.
But that's not what the motion is.
I know. I realize that. I could have made another motion.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion? Uh, do we need a roll call on that?
Read, read the motion.
Motion to continue? That would?
It, was it seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Compo?
Yes.
Mr. Compo seconded that?
I'm, I'm lost, I'm sorry.
Motion stated?
Right.
Seconded. Now, do we want roll call or do we want to just hear your name?
Let's roll call.
Yeah.
Ocampo? Commissioner Ocampo?
Yes.
Okay, um, Commissioner Coram?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Bratt?
No.
And Vice Chair Valencia?
May.
And Chair Bobadia?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes two to zero.
Okay, moving forward. Mobile food truck, uh, moratorium. Um, we're gonna excuse Commissioner Ocampo at this moment?
As a food truck owner, uh, chairperson, I need to recuse myself from discussion and voting on this agenda item. Regarding the proposed food truck moratorium, as the owner of a food truck business, participating could present a conflict of interest in the interest of fairness and transparency. I will abstain from any involvement in this item and step away from the days during the consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Step.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, so this item is regarding a temporary food truck moratorium for the period of 12 months. Um, this moratorium is seen as a proactive measure to give the city time to thoroughly review and update our zoning regulations related to mobile food vendors. It allows us to ensure that our policies are clear, fair, and aligned with the city's economic development and land use goals without limiting current operations. The Willows Municipal Code is currently vague when it comes to mobile food vendors. Terms like outside sales and transient mobile businesses are not clearly defined. Yet they have been used to permit food trucks via conditional use permits. Mobile food trucks are currently only allowed in the central commercial district, which creates an uneven concentration of mobile food, food vendors in one part of town, limiting flexibility and operation in other districts. Again, this pause allows staff, the planning commission, city council, and public to work together to develop a modern, consistent regulatory framework for mobile food vending that considers public safety, economic fairness, aesthetics, and traffic flow, among other things. It also ensures that we are providing predictable, transparent process for future applicants and encouraging well-planned business growth across the city. Um, this action supports the council's goal of priority number two, economic development, and specifically the goal of completing a zoning code update that promotes business opportunities in a reliable and equitable way. Um, I just want to make clear again that this 12-month, uh, moratorium, this would be a resolution that you guys would be approving to, you know, uh, modify, deny, or support the ordinance to the city council. I do want to address a, a, uh, not a protest, but, uh, a statement made that this was, uh, not within our legal right to pursue this ordinance. Um, that letter is in your packet. That protest basically states a, a piece of the California Government Code that relates to urgency ordinances, which follow a different set of rules. Um, so the statements made within that protest are not valid as it relates to this process. We were following a regular basically land use ordinance that would put a temporary hold on the food trucks, not an urgency ordinance, which we require specific health and safety findings. Um, we also received a letter of support that's included in your package. Um, and with that, I want to reiterate one more time, this does not affect current operations and would only be for future applications and only for a temporary time in order to review the code. And if the code was reviewed, uh, before 12 months, we could always come back and, and that moratorium earlier as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions?
When I heard the word moratorium, I immediately thought of the word mortuary. I have been here 50 years. I've sat on this dais not only as a planning commissioner, but also as a city council person. And all I've heard for years is we need to grow. And I am against a moratorium for one reason, because the city council has kept saying we want to grow. And if we put a moratorium on something, the word is going to get out that Willows is not a business-friendly area. Question, how long is it gonna take you to write, write the rules for food trucks?
Uh, well, we propose the mor- Well, we proposed the moratorium for twelve months. So we've got a joint city planning, joint city council planning commission agenda item set up for the July tenth meeting to go over chapter eighteen. So all of those things would be discussed at that meeting. We'll also be having public input on how we're going to update our title eighteen zoning codes. There's other issues with the definitions. We also don't define mobile carts, which have their own set of standards and rules. Those are the people that are mobile on sidewalks or go from place to place. There's protections for them in California that we need to address. Mobile food trucks are another thing that we really want to clarify by definition of that. So I would anticipate well ahead of twelve months, but we wanted to give ourselves time on that.
I would suggest that you fast pace it. I know how these rules are made. You borrow it from another city that you like and you adjust it to fit yourself. I'm fearful that if we put this moratorium on, it's going to kill any potential growth that we possibly could have. And please make it clear, I read this, that this does not affect current food trucks.
Correct.
A couple of things. One, I think that we keep talking about how we need to update all of our codes and everything. And I think that this allows us to do that without... It took so long for the Ocampos to get their spot because we had nothing in place. So I see this as simply a way to actually speed the process for somebody else who wants to bring a food truck. This only relates to food trucks, so it's not stopping the growth of Willows.
No, but it sends a message.
I disagree with that. It, July is two months away. I happen to be very excited and happy that the city council wants to work with the planning commission and that we're going to have a meeting in July. I think that both the planning commission and the city council want growth for Willows. I think we just want to do it the right way. I have no problem saying twelve months or sooner, and I expect that it would be sooner, because I know that people want growth. They want things to happen. But we need to have, we've got to have some, some plan. I'm not saying it has to be totally black and white, but we have to have some codes in place. We have to have some rules that we follow. There's got to be something. And so I happen to support this very much, and I'm happy to see it here.
Yeah, if I can make a comment. I think we can see the city of Corning as an example of what happens when you don't have anything set in place, because now they've had an issue and they've tried to get ordinances and ordinances in place since February, because it's, it has been chaotic. You know, if you come into Solano, you can see it's, there's food trucks everywhere and with no set, you know, ways to do things, then it'll... I wouldn't want to see Willows like that, right? Where, you know, they're just kind of running around with, like chickens with their heads cut off. So I think two months away is pretty close. It won't take that long to get there, so.
I also feel that our community, I'm probably going to get a lot of hate for this, but that's okay. I really feel that it probably could have been worded better, and I'm not faulting the city when I say that, because...
You can fault me, it could have been worded better.
But I also feel that as a public, I don't think we help our community grow when we just automatically attack everybody. And that's what we do on Facebook when anything like this happens. And we could make that call and we could find out, and we could put that on Facebook too. We could say, hey, I checked, the city said it doesn't apply to the current food trucks. And then we don't have to go through a hundred and twenty or however many comments it ended up being of, oh, how terrible. Nobody wants the city to grow, you know? But it is nice to see everybody here tonight.
Well, I commend city staff for making the correction.
I do too.
As quickly as possible.
Yeah. Well, it's probably, you were, I don't know, maybe in a hurry to get it out and you're trying to use all the right language and mistakes happen.
Appreciate that. The existing food trucks would not be affected by the moratorium.
We're not closing food trucks.
The three that are currently permitted will continue operation as, as normal. Yeah, so that is a, I believe it's a temporary food permit that they get through the environmental health department. So unfortunately, environmental health is done by the county. I don't have here, here present, but it is, they're tempered, there's different styles of licenses. I know from seeing a couple of food truck licenses, that they're specifically tailored to a mobile vendor. So they list things as their commissary, other different things. So I believe there's different styles of applications for those. This ordinance would not affect those either, because they're not mobile-operated vehicle food trucks.
So I think just a little bit of, I guess, communication education on top of this, of saying, these, like what you just said, you know, a little snapshot of, these are the businesses that won't be affected.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this is something to really, a guide for the future, make it an easier process.
Yep.
And again, it is, comes down to marketing, you know?
Yeah, the public notice that was listed, it did lean itself to not be clear and maybe the other direction that it could potentially affect existing. So that was a, that was a not clear statement made. We tried to address it on Facebook the following day, let everybody know that it's just for new applications and tried to make it as clear as possible in this packet as well, that it is only for new application and will not affect the existing three businesses.
And I mean, this is a good opportunity for, you know, everybody here to spread that message also. I think we do want to see growth, you know, gradual growth, positive growth in Willows. And we do want to help people just, you know, following the rules and trying to set a structure for, you know, moving forward. Can I get a motion or actually in open, open public, public comments?
Public carry.
Seven thirty-six.
My name's Marlena Sparkman, and I'm the person that wrote the post on Facebook that you referenced. And I appreciate that you referenced that, because I did call twice. And even though someone on Facebook said I didn't, I just looked, I screenshotted my call log, three forty-four, the first day, and about eight o'clock the next morning, that person still has not called me back. So I did try to do some due diligence and find out. And my concern at this point is that the notice in the paper said forty-five days, with it being maybe a year, but when I get here tonight, it just says a year. And so when you make a notice in the paper and then you come to the meeting, are you allowed to change? I don't know the answer to that. Are you allowed to change that once you get to the meeting? Or does it have to be reposted?
So just regarding the forty-five day notice, that, that is what is required if you did an urgency ordinance, which is something similar to what the city of Corning did. So we did post that as a, I guess, a crossover in between interpretation of the codes. What we're allowed to do at this moratorium is suggest a reasonable time. So that's where the twelve months came from. But yeah, the, the public notice, we did inquire to our city attorney. I don't believe we've heard back from him if we need to, to renotice this. But I think it's due to the fact that we're still within our bounds within the California code and the moratorium and the paper listed forty-five days with a possible extension of two one-year terms totaling a two-year forty-five day potential total, that we're below that threshold with the one year.
But when you, when you say forty-five days?
With the possibility of two one-year extensions.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But it's, so it's okay for you to change that at the meeting without notifying people again?
We'll get confirmation on that for the city attorney.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
If we did have to notice it again, we would come back and do that process.
As questions, I had eleven questions and only three were answered at the time. And there were people that were posting on there that did have knowledge and information that could have answered those questions. So when you say that people should call, I did try to call. I want you to know that. I called twice, and if you'd like to see my screenshots?
I don't need to see.
I'm happy to show you that. I don't need to.
Do you know who you called on that?
Yeah, I can talk to you about that offline.
No, that's, that's fine, but you said you called the next day as well?
I called twice. I called in the afternoon and the next morning.
And so Friday was when it came out in the paper, and we don't work on Saturday, so that's probably why you didn't get a response to that.
Maybe that I called somebody's cell phone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You guys answer your cell phones for work?
I didn't receive a call, so I don't know who she's referencing.
And I'm not going to say publicly.
Well, that's fine. It was over the weekend anyways. We put out a correction on Monday as quickly as we possibly could when we were in the office. So we just wanted to make that clear.
Asking questions of a public notice should be looked at in a bad light, because I asked questions that are relevant to the community. The notice, it's not my fault, and no offense, I've made plenty of mistakes and had to correct them, but it's not my fault that it didn't say that the current ones were exempt. And it does say a moratorium, and I do one hundred percent agree. A moratorium makes it sound like Willows is a community of no instead of the community of go, you know? And we want people that want to come here. We want people to come here and open businesses. And perception is reality. And if people perceive that we aren't open and willing and welcoming, then it's going to hurt us. And if people perceive that when we ask questions, whether it's the planning commission or the city council, and people come at us and say, you shouldn't be asking those questions publicly. Well, what, what happened to transparency? Why not?
I never said you shouldn't ask them publicly. So if that's what you heard me say.
Talking about, I simply said that. On Facebook, you said, people were asking questions on Facebook when they should have made a phone call.
People were posting on Facebook.
That was me.
And I posted. And you weren't the only one posting, and a lot of people posting.
Yeah, there was a hundred and thirty-eight comments.
I didn't count, but I was close when I said a hundred and twenty-five. But my point was, when we just speak negatively about our community, about our town, without really knowing the facts, yes, you read something, yes, you should have been able to believe that.
It appeared to be factual.
But I'm just saying, it's not even just this post. It's almost every post about Willows.
And you know what?
So much negativity.
We really try and root, and that, to not allow that, that, that's.
Okay, but, but my point is that that does not help us grow either.
No, I understand, but, but. Those hundred and thirty-eight people, they're not official. They're not people sitting behind the dais. They're not representing Willows. They're just people that have an opinion on the internet, and a lot of them are keyboard warriors. If you go back and you look, people were talking bad about the city council. I personally mentioned Evan and Lori and Matt, and I said that they all have Willows in their best interest. And so not everybody on there was saying something that was negative or derogatory.
And I did not accuse everybody of that either. I'm going to stop my part of the conversation there, but my only point was that that doesn't help Willows grow when we are so negative against our community on Facebook.
Well.
And I'll leave it there.
And I took it like you meant my post was negative, but it wasn't. I have a right as a citizen to ask questions. The questions were not negative. And if people that work for the city came on there and had enough time to say, why are you asking questions? They could have answered those, and it would have been over before Monday, before he made the, the new post.
Yeah, we don't participate in Facebook on the weekends, those kind of groups.
But.
Thank you for, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on that? All right, come on, sir.
Doug Ross, D O U D R O S S, resident within the city limits of Willow. And what I'd like to say is that I don't see the relative, and I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a representative of the Valley Mayor. I fail to see the relevance of the connection between placing a forty-five-year moratorium on studying mobile food trucks and the economic future of Willows. I don't think it sends enough of a message that Willows is, as Marlene said, a no community, an not-a-go community. The reason I'm speaking about it is I've been living thirty years here in Willows, and I only meant to stay one night. But one day went into thirty years, and over that thirty years period, I've observed more than I'd like to have observed. So I think I'm speaking with, you know, attribution to what I've actually seen over thirty years. But just to tell you one thing I've seen, out by where Denny's used to be, and they parked for a while right next to the Chevron station, next to where Jack and the Box is. I hope, many people seem to hope it's going to come when Caltrans gets out of the way, which is another inhibition to growth. Caltrans seems to be making Willows look bad. I've had several people say to me over the past two years, when is Jack and the Box? Give me, I don't see Caltrans stepping up to the microphone here and saying, you know, here's what the actual situation is. If I may, and not to crowd my three minutes, when I covered the city of Portland one time, Caltrans representative was there. And I, I went up to the guy afterwards and I said, I'm a representative of the Valley Mayor, may I have your business card? And the guy said, no. And I just walked away. I mean, when you get hot buttons like that, you know, why? You're Caltrans. I mean, if I had started a ruckus with a guy, I would probably ended up at the county jail. But let me get to my point. The vendor that I've seen out by next to the Chevron station and also out close to Casa Ramos, that sells vegetarian-type variety of foods. But I came to understand through layperson, laypeople saying that they weren't registered in the environmental health department, hadn't looked at their cogency, in other words, whether it was tainted or not. So I would say food is such a paramount thing that I don't see why some kind of a moratorium would be bad. If you're, like, people who sell fruit, strawberries, particularly on the corner of classroom, General Medical, General Medical Center is not licensed and run by the health department. That seems to me to be courting a big enough risk for a family town that... Could I ask, could the moratorium be placed for a year with the condition that if it was studied well within a shorter period, that the moratorium could be lifted? That concludes my comments. I don't hold any of them as being rhetorical. I could stand here half the night and recite, like, case examples of why I think there's no, there's no grounds to stand on that I think this has been a very shaky issue. And it, I'm not going to say I support a moratorium or a law, but I'm just saying that things have been pretty kind of sloppy over the thirty years that I've seen it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Comment. Doug, the truck that is behind Chevron is not a taco truck. It is a fruit truck. That's all they sell.
I didn't say what it was or wasn't.
No, but a lot of people assume that it is a taco truck.
There was one there for a while.
Well, what I'd like to point out is, and I appreciate your comment and understand it, that I didn't say what it was or wasn't, is my only point. But I do, but I do understand what you're trying to say to me, I think. But thank you.
All right, any other public comment on this matter? Okay, I'll close that at seven forty-eight. Can I get a?
Wait, we got somebody coming.
Got one? Oh, Todd slipped you through, man. You better jump up faster next time. All right.
Goodie, John Owens, two twelve, Martin, right? I guess, maybe I'm just not savvy. I'm just, I question why there needs to be a moratorium to do the sections. Does that make sense what I'm saying? Why do we need to stop everything to review it?
There is no section.
So why would, why do we need a moratorium to make a section?
Well, zero, but we wouldn't want to have somebody come in. And that would be the point of the moratorium would be to clarify the rules, regulations, where they can operate, so we don't have somebody coming in and the interim and us having to go through that process with them and bringing another item back that maybe is, is not clear and concise.
This moratorium isn't saying no to taco trucks.
But it says no to anybody, like if my wife and I wanted to open a business.
If you want to open.
For up to a year.
If you want to.
Here, right?
No, a mobile food business.
Mobile food.
Yeah. Yeah, not any business.
Yeah.
Just a mobile food business.
That way we can review or make a new section.
Yeah, there's legal requirements that we need to identify for cart vendors, mobile food trucks, a variety of different mobile food vendors that, basically, it's our current code, like I said, says transient businesses, mobile businesses. And it's only allowed in a central commercial district. I don't think the intent, or even at the time the code was written, that there were mobile food trucks.
And this, I'm sorry, Joe, this would be for any type of food? distribution via-
Motorized, motorized food vendors or a food truck, something that's pulled with a motor. I don't think, yeah, that would be.
And so doing a moratorium would be helpful for the city because they would be able to come up with the right verbiage-
Correct.
With somebody applying for 45 days and/or up to a year. Would give you time to make-
Our code update is currently in progress, yeah, and we'll be having our, like, center July 10th meeting with the City Council and the Planning Commission to identify changes to Chapter 18, which is the zoning.
Could those changes still be made without a moratorium, however you'd be faced with maybe the possibility of somebody applying for-
Yeah, that would, yeah, the moratorium has no effect on the zoning code updates. Those are going to happen regardless. This would just be to prevent if we got three applications tomorrow, bring, you know, having to bring those forward with unclear language.
Thank you. That was just my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Any other public comment?
My name is Pete Mann, born and raised in Willow's. The way I see it, I agree with you. We want to be a town where we're welcoming businesses, not pushing them away. Jack in the Box, all these businesses that we've heard are coming to Willow's end up not coming. In my opinion, the best way to make our side happy and to ensure that it's done in the quickest possible way, because if I remember correctly, you guys said that it, you could do it in 45 days, but you're asking for a year.
So the original public notice stated 45 days. And again, the year is just something that was put in as an estimated time. And again, the Planning Commission can make modifications or suggestions to add language saying, as the code is adopted, up to a year, whichever comes first, things of that nature. So there is, there is room for that, yes.
The way to, the way I see it, the way to ensure a welcoming atmosphere to business, and to ensure that the codes are done as quickly as possible, is to not do anything. If you guys want it done, get it done. But I agree, we don't want to tell people Willow's is a good business, in my opinion. Well, I got to say.
I know Jack in the Box isn't on the agenda, but I attended a City Council meeting, and what I heard at that City Council meeting was they're still waiting on Jack in the Box. That's-
Can I address that real quick here? Just because it's been-
Because everybody keeps bringing that up.
Just because it's been said multiple times. So Jack in the Box went about, through about 15 plan check reviews, meaning when they submitted their plans to our engineer, they got that returned back to them and back again about 15 times with the same comments usually. So the delay, the initial delay in the plan check process came from a lack of them being able to address their findings through their own engineer. Jack in the Box is still currently, as of two days ago, by email, pursuing their permits. They're now dealing with the Caltrans permitting process, because they need an encroachment permit through Caltrans because they're on Wood Street. So that is their current step. They have all intention of still moving forward. They were actually hoping to start construction this last fall, but still needed a Caltrans and encroachment permit, and we all know how that goes. If government's slow, Caltrans usually beats them. So it's just been a very drawn-out process. And just communication is, but do want to clarify that they are still planning on coming for it. Just sent them an email, and they're resubmitting revisions again to Caltrans on their second submittal at this point. So we're hopeful that that still does come through.
And truth be told, I wasn't expecting to come up here and speak, but I've heard of multiple businesses, four years was born and raised here, that eventually are like, never mind, it's too many hoops or whatnot. And I just use Jack in the Box.
No, absolutely, and that's, you know, as we're new staff here, we're looking to make that a lot less of a thing and streamline the process and be supportive of businesses and get them to where they want to be within. We know it's tough. We know regulation's tough. We know it's California regulation that's tough. But we have, we do have certain things that we have to go by, but we want to facilitate the person getting through that process as much as possible and correct that reputation as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up, come on up.
Just to clarify, because I'm not 100%, you said the three mobile food trucks are not going to be affected by this.
Correct, yes, correct.
During this period that you were writing this, whether it's 45 days or a year, they can continue business as normal?
Yes, there will be no disruption to theirs.
Once the plans are written, if they are, you know, getting written, would they be affected by it at all?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, typically, it would be any new applications coming in after adoption of a new code.
Typically, so-
So we could write into the code grandfathered, you know, the uses that have already-
Existing.
Is that something that you guys plan to do? Or do they plan to get written, and then after everything's set and done, it's like, well, you know, we kind of let you guys hang out and do your thing while we wrote this, but now you guys are going to have to come fly?
I think we might have legal challenges to be, if that was the direction that council wanted to go on, changing a zoning on an existing business. Absolutely.
The three food trucks that are here in our community, that are part of our family, we want to know, are they safe? From these rules that you guys plan to, you know?
Yeah, I would, I would say that's the, I don't want to speak for every single thing, but typically, the existing uses that have existing permits to operate will continue to operate as long as they're within their-
Is that how you guys plan it, you said typically, but-
So we don't, we don't, we don't drive, we don't drive how that code would be written, so this, at this point, this is going to be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the council for the moratorium. The code update will be driven by a, these meetings in the City Council on how that's adopted. So I think that's why she doesn't want to state that that's it, because ultimately, it's not our decision at the end of the day as staff.
So how does that get voted on?
That's going to be the City Council.
Correct, so yeah, it sounds like you have a vested interest. I would recommend staying in the loop with what's going on. There's going to be public meetings. We have one calendar for July 10th. So it, we will be doing public outreach on the zoning code, and not just mobile food trucks, but the entire code. So if you have ideas and thoughts about how you would like to see the city of Willow's zoning code land use change, that is your opportunity to put that in there, yeah.
Thank you, Delaney. And I want to reiterate again, since we have a nice audience here and probably a good one listening, that July 10th will be our joint Planning Commission, City Council meeting to discuss all of Chapter 18 and zoning requirements and all the things that we're kind of going over today. So I really do encourage all of you to come out and be heard on what you think is the right way to proceed with that.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close that 7:57. I'm going to need a motion.
I have a question for staff. It's been brought up that the legal notice that was in the newspaper stated 45 days, is that correct?
Yeah, so initially, that's, that's, when you do an urgency ordinance, that is the timeline, and that was mistakenly written as well. We do have, it's 40, it was stated as 45 days with the option of two one-year extensions.
Does it say that?
It does say that in the public notice, correct. I mean, it says that, yeah.
So we cannot vote for a one-year moratorium. We have to vote for a 45-day moratorium with the extensions possibility of two years.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it's a legal notice. That, I mean, you can't change that.
Yeah, no, the public notice was posted, but we will be under the total requirement for it, so I don't have the legal opinion on that. We didn't hear back from it, from our city attorney, but you, you can go ahead and vote on it how you please, and if we need to renotice it, then I will bring it back next month.
Okay.
So I would just continue as is until we get that advice from the city attorney.
I mean, you could potentially say passing imposing a temporary, you know, more than-
I mean, you could say for 45 days with extensions. I don't think that's necessary. You might save me a meeting out of it. But as the, it's not written that way in the ordinance or the resolution. So I would not do, I would keep it as the one-year. The notice is one thing.
Maybe just do an update on that post and clarification for the public?
Yeah, we can do that. Yep.
That way, it's clear and-
I'll check the legal requirements. If we do have to come back, then we can do this as another item. I think we'll be good on the public notice side, but for clarification. I mean, basically, you're approving something that's, that's less than the possibility of what was-
Yeah, you were just giving them a heads up and-
Notice in the paper, yeah. It was, the urgency ordinance, public noticing, timing requirements, kind of got crossed up with what the regular ordinance process is. So with the regular ordinance process, we can, we just have to do a reasonable timeframe. When you do the urgency ordinance, it's 45 days, and then you can extend for a year. And then you can extend for one additional year. So we were, you know, recommending for under that total amount of timeframe that would be required of an urgency ordinance and going with the reasonable timeframe of one year. So we're not bound by the 45 days. If we're just bound by a reasonable time requirement, which we put in a year. And again, you guys have the option to modify, you do have the option to modify the resolution, or modify the recommendation of the ordinance. For that as well, you can add language, like was suggested, if you so choose, to do a year or upon completion of the municipal code adoption. And then if we complete it in eight months, this goes away because that was your recommendation.
I would move that we deny the proposed moratorium.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're going to do roll call?
Roll call. Chair Bobadilla?
I'm going to go against that.
So that's nay.
Nay.
Vice Chair Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
I'm voting with Mr. Bobadilla.
So nay. Commissioner Coram?
Aye.
And abstain, El Campo, so we have a tie, two to two.
Would you like to pick up a gender that would make-
No, I just want it denied. I think it's a no growth message that's being sent out.
What do we do when there's a two-two?
It's a no.
City Clerk, I believe. It would fail on a- Okay. Yep, so, okay. Nope, so motion does not pass.
Well, his motion did not pass.
Right?
Correct, we can make another motion.
So we can make another motion. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance imposing a temporary 12-month or sooner moratorium on the acceptance of the new mobile food truck applications in all zoning districts within the city of Willow's. And I say that because we've got to have, we need some things in place so we can do this right.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Can I get a second on that? I'm going to second that.
Okay. Roll call. Chair Bobadilla?
Yes.
Vice Chair Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Commissioner Coram?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes, three to one.
All right, thank you. Can we bring in Commissioner El Campo back? Yeah? Yeah.
So what do you guys think? And do that, and wait on that?
Yeah, I'm going to push that. Just do the time. This should be fine. July 10th. Yeah, I think it'll be, I think it's at six o'clock, same time. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't want to-
No, no, you're good, you're good. Thanks for coming down, Delaney. Yeah, no. Yeah, I'll chat with you about all of that tomorrow or something. Yes. Oh, yeah, that's right.
That's right.
All right. All right. Moving on. Multi-jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, good evening again. This is a public hearing for the City Council, sorry, for the Planning Commission to recommend that the City Council adopt the Glen County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan 2025 as the official hazard mitigation plan for the city of Willow's and incorporate it into the safety element of the general plan. Developed with Glen County, the city of Orland, and other local partners, this plan outlines coordinated strategies to reduce risks from natural hazards. For Willow's key actions includes improving flood protection through drainage system maintenance and upgrades and ditch cleaning, addressing wildfire risks by expanding fuels reduction and weed abatement efforts, particularly around undeveloped areas. Public education and updated emergency communication tools will also support community preparedness. Adopting this plan improves cities, improves public safety, ensures compliance with the state and federal requirement, and positions the city for future hazard mitigation funding. So staff recommends the approval of this general plan amendment, and this plan also is a requirement of Cal OES and FEMA to receive reimbursements or funding when a disaster does occur. We have to have this plan in place. And it also is a good guideline to try to achieve as much mitigation as possible, knowing that the funding is limited, but we still, we do what we can to achieve that.
Okay. Questions, comments? Questions, comments?
I made the mistake of printing it all single file.
It's a big one, yeah. No, it is very in-depth. I was actually at Glen County when we did the first one, and this is actually an update to that. I don't know if I made that clear, so this is kind of going back and revisiting every five years, I believe. We have to do an update to it. So yes, it is a very large document. And as a side note, the county has approved their version. So basically, as the lead applicant approves it, the clock starts on the five years, and then we'll submit to FEMA and Cal OES for review as well. Just additional info.
Any public comment on that? Okay, well, let's move on to a motion.
I would so move.
Bring a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all is in favor of motion? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained. Okay, motion will pass. Should I excuse Commissioner El Campo before reading this, or?
She can be excused, yeah.
Okay, you want to excuse her? Sorry.
Yes, excuse myself again. More steps.
All right. While she's being excused, all matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman of the commission and not to staff and/or the audience. When the chairman calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged while not required. The city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like distributed to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at 201 North Lassen Street, Willow's, California, 95988, or email it to planning@cityofwillows.org. Item A, Tacos of Campos, file number UP2402, review.
Good evening, Joe Bettencourt, Community Development Services Director. Start introducing myself. So this item is coming back. We did an electrical review of progress on power for the Tacos of Campos food truck. And we got some additional questions and clarification was sought on some items. So I'm going to just kind of go through those, and you guys, if I missed, did miss something, please let me know, and I can try to address that as well. Um, so one of the main things that that was kind of codified was the condition of approval for the waste bin. So I did get to speak with them and let them know what the issue was, and that, you know, you were not permitted to have a visible waste bin. Normally, we would always make a requirement that it be shielded, similar to the restroom, like it is, some sort of a better-looking thing than a waste bin. So the owner ended up reducing the size of the bin. It does now sit within the same employee-provided restroom, so it is hidden off-site. What we would like to do would be, if, you know, if it works for you, obviously, we've eliminated the public sight of the issue, would be to amend that conditions of approval to state something to the effect that the public waste containers would be emptied into the company slash hidden waste container and then be removed from waste management on a not less than weekly basis. So that was the modification we were looking to make with the waste bin, so. The other part of it was[1732.92] The other part of it was delivery of, of food items. I did talk to environmental health on this and I talked to tacos o campus as well. They stated that the, the items, delivery was more, not food delivery, that the items are more paper plates, napkins, things of those nature, and those are allowed to be delivered on-site. It wasn't specifically listed in any conditions of approval, but from environmental health standpoint, those deliveries can be made. We can work with them on, on vehicle parking and making sure those deliveries, if they're made on-site, are, you know, out of the, the public right of way and parked along the edge of the curb. The commissary, the location is listed as Marvell Food Stores at five seventeen South Tahima Street, and this location is listed for overnight storage, storage. I did talk to the owner and they have been notified that the vehicle must be parked at this location for overnight storage unless they amend their environmental health permit to reflect that. So they've been notified of that. Regarding parking and employees, it was stated that the employees are the only ones that are using the parking. They were approved for off-site parking, meaning parking on the street. We didn't specifically. State in the condition of, of approval that we wouldn't allow employee parking. We did, we did not hold them into any requirements for that as well, but they did state that it is just for employee parking and it's usually a couple cars at that location. And then the future brick and mortar restaurant, I talked to them and the owner still does hope to establish a brick and mortar restaurant. I brought up the location of the PG&E pole. They actually stated that they met with PG&E. And that there's still room to the west side of that pole for a brick and mortar restaurant. Basically, worked with PG&E to ensure that that location of that pole was somewhere that if they did put a restaurant next to it, could remain in place and not have to be moved. So that was the items that I had listed for follow-up. If you need any additional information or any questions or, or think I didn't cover one of the previous items, let me know.
When did they start parking at Marvell?
That is on their, so their, their commissary license through environmental health.
Right. I mean, did, have they started doing that?
I, I have not followed up with environmental health. I can talk to them. I just talked to them very recently about this, so I, I can definitely inquire about that. Commissioner, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
No questions? Okay. Public comments? A public comment? Okay, so I'm going to need a motion.
The only thing that I think I would really, I mean, you had to do whatever in the motion would be the condition of approval. If that, if that works for you on the, the waste bin requirement would be.
It's like taking your trash out every week.
Yeah, it would be removal of the, from the front public bins into the waste receptacle that's now in the same covered area as the employee restroom.
And is that waste covered area? How often is that?
I would assume waste management's weekly usually, so I would say, I would put in the condition not less than once weekly.
Yeah.
Something to that effect. So that, that would be the big clarification for me to amend.
I mean, I would definitely put that in a, it's like once, once a week scenario. Okay, so we just need a condition of approval for that.
Yeah, just a consensus of the council or, or, yeah, the commission would, would work for me on that, if that's amendable to you guys.
Okay, that's okay. I'm good with, I'm good with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Section two review of Willows Municipal Code, Title eighteen zoning.
Oh, yeah. And I'm actually going to make a recommendation that we, we move this maybe to the May twentieth meeting and.
I love that.
Aftering of time, because it's, it's code and it's very, I don't want to, we can, we've got our, our training coming up, May twentieth.
It would make sense to do.
Yeah, so we've got a nice intermediate one and while our brains are a little fresher and we can have some more time to look over these things in light of some of the zoning stuff we've talked to, if that's amendable to the commission.
Bring her back in.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I just wanted to, to catch that before, but now I'll have to repeat it. So Commissioner Ocampo, I was just stating that I would like to move the review of the part two of the section eighteen code to the May twentieth special training we're going to do, just to have a little fresher minds on everybody and kind of end the meeting earlier. So if you guys are amendable to that, we can push this to the May twentieth agenda.
Anybody against that? We don't need to vote on it, right?
Nope, that direction works.
All right. Comments and reports? Any other comment? I mean, I, I like to make comment. So many meetings I've been part, never seen such a large crowd. That, that's positive. You know, we're talking about, you know, growth in our community. So, you know, people being involved. It's great to hear opinions. You know, that's the beauty about things, you know, hearing different perspectives and taking accountability, you know, because you're our, our community and we like to hear it from you. So I mean, the more meetings you come to, you know, we appreciate that. So that's my comment.
I'd like to welcome our two new members.
Oh, yeah.
Nice to have five people.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, stepping up. Any staff reports?
Uh, no, just, yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming aboard. Appreciate you guys. Commissioner Cora, Commissioner Ocampo, it's a, it's an awesome civic duty to be a part of. It's not the easiest thing sometimes and it gets opinionated. And I want to just kind of second what Commissioner Bobadia said, that I appreciate everybody coming out and we like to hear the good, the bad, the ugly. It's not going to hurt my feelings. Like, I tried to do the best, but you guys let us know where, where you want to be. So we do appreciate that. And then, yeah, for, for future items, we don't have much currently for the, on schedule for next planning commissions, but we will hopefully be coming forward with some, some bigger projects that I can't talk about too much now, but I think everybody will be very excited about. Jack in the Box being, being one of them. I know there won't be planning commission, but they're, they sound like they're at the goal line. And we've got, you know, a couple of new businesses in town, one right on Wood Street. So happy to see, happy to see some progress on the business side of it, and hopefully we can keep that going with, with improving our process and making it as easy as possible for these applicants.
Yeah, well, thank you. All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good conversation.